All right, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting, Pownau, Vermont, Tuesday, April 16, 2019. I want to, before I ask everybody to introduce themselves to the camera, I'd like to just read the agenda first for our viewing audience. The first order of business will be to approve this agenda. The second will be, hopefully, a quick reorganization of not just the chair, but everything else listed here, vice chair, clerk, et cetera, newspaper of record, website, meeting place and meeting times. Then we'll take public comment, if any. We'll approve minutes of March 26, and then we'll introduce Jim Sullivan, Executive Director of the BRCRC. Under Old Business, we'll talk about the Energy Committee, which I believe has been created, and under New Business, we'll go back through those rules of procedure and discuss those. So I would look for a motion.
Who we adopt the agenda as distributed?
Second.
We have a second, Ronnie. Any further discussion on the agenda? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Let's, well, start with me. We'll go around the table if we could introduce ourselves to the camera. My name is Mike Slattery. I'm Chairman of the Planning Commission here in Pownau.
I'm Sid Suthers, member.
Jessica Witherell, Secretary of the Board.
Megan Randall, member.
Jim Winchester, member.
Ron Bizan, member.
My name's Jim Sullivan, and I'm with the Regional Planning Commission.
Excellent. Thank you all. Thank you all. And I don't think you, Jessica, I don't know, maybe you know her.
You stopped when someone got introduced, yeah?
Yeah, you guys know each other. Okay. And that, more importantly, is blood sausage from her place, so if you're still hungry, it's really good.
It is good, I'll say.
Okay. Tonight's our reorganization meeting, now that we're officially passed all of the voting and everything else in the town. So the first item is nomination of Chair. I would look for nominations.
I nominate Mike Slattery.
Second.
I think Jim Winchester's second at first.
Yes.
Any further discussion about this guy Slattery being your Chair again?
Well, he seems to be fairly competent.
If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So sit in, Jim.
And I'll abstain. I've decided, since we've gone with a Vice Chair in the past, that we should have a Vice Chair again, because the role of clerk, Jim, unless you want to correct me on this, is generally the person responsible for the records and everything, and since we have a professional secretary, I think what we really need is a Vice Chair. But then again, the state says you must or shall appoint a clerk as well. So what I'm getting at here is I think the clerk will be in name only, but could be called upon to take some notes some night if, you know, Jess gets caught in the snow or something like that.
Yes, we are.
So I would look for nominations first for Vice Chair.
My nomination's first.
Oh, yeah, second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion about Sid? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations.
Carries, carries. Yay!
Got a vice in front of your name.
I just hope your health remains good.
He's going to the gym.
Here's, next is nomination for that clerk, kind of in name only.
Arisats clerk.
I named him after Ron Bizan, he's the clerk with the select.
We have a nod.
I'm not very fast at writing. Only in the slowest. How about you, Megan? You're doing right now, you got a pen in your hand.
Wait, we have a nomination on the table.
See, wait, wait, first of all, we have a nomination for Ron.
We have to vote on him. I second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
They're a well-willed machine.
If none, all those in favor for Ron being the clerk say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, of course.
I'll say nay.
That's a good man.
We have two nays. So the vote does not carry. So then I heard a motion for Megan Randall to be the secretary. Do I have a second for Megan? We have a second. Any discussion about Megan being the clerk? If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Abstain.
Vote carries. He's good, isn't he?
He's a sidestep.
For him, yeah. Select Board member, he knows his way around. All right. Going down through, we need to establish.
I move that we appoint Bennington Banner as the newspaper of record for the Pownau Planning Commission.
Do I have a second for that? Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Posting sites for our notices and things?
I nominate Town Clerk's Office Website, Winchester Store and the Village Market.
Do I have a second?
Could you do the discussion?
Well, I asked for it.
Could we put it on the front porch forum, or isn't that appropriate?
It's not a legal place to put it, but we can put it there.
Oh, okay.
In fact, I encourage that we put it there. And in the...
In the town, there is a town agenda, the newsletter that comes out.
And there's a discovered panel newsletter.
More than Marya.
Okay. I think we've already voted on the Bennington Banner, though, okay? And then the posting sites are the physical posting sites, where Jessica goes around town and hangs them up.
That's for legal notices?
That's for legal notices and posting the agendas.
Yeah.
Regular meeting, 48 hours in advance, special meetings, 24 hours in advance. So can I get a motion?
Are there previous sites before, weren't there?
Yeah.
So keep all previous sites.
I think we ought to keep what we have.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's not make them applicable.
Let's do it. Let's do it. Ronnie, you say we keep everything exactly the way it is, including the meeting place and meeting times. We can roll it all into one motion.
That'd be good.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Excuse me.
If none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Now that we've voted, would you refresh our recollections to the meeting times? All at 7:00?
Third Tuesday at 7:00.
Except when it's not the third Tuesday.
To the town report.
Can we try to keep it to the third Tuesday a little bit more strictly?
Are you being a wise guy?
No, I'm not. I volunteer the library.
She's been watching that commercial on TV.
I get one email on the third Tuesday of every month, and it's from Megan Randall saying, "Do we have a meeting today?" It's ironic that she knows to email me and ask me that question.
But I don't email you.
The last one, in March, remember, I was away, and we didn't do that because you guys wanted me to be here to accept the honor of being the Chairman for the 100th time in a row. So that's why. So it is and has been, for a very long time, the third Tuesday of each month.
So any other meetings that you've called, like where we're supposed to go to the Select Board for, those are in addition?
Those are in addition, and they're special meetings, and they'll have their own warning and posting.
Okay.
And now that we have a professional secretary, you will be the first or second to know about that, okay? Right?
Email me at home.
Unless our town administrator is going to say anything on behalf of the public, we're going to move right through public comment. Let's take a quick look at the minutes of March 26, please. I think Jessica got these out to you. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at them all or not, but if we could just look through them. Everybody have a copy?
Mm-hmm.
I move we approve the minutes for Tuesday, March 26, 2019, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep. Oh, no, that's a good question, Ron. Can we approve these? Mike Slattery, Jim Winchester?
Megan.
Sid.
Sid. Yes, that's one, two, three, four. Oh, you're right.
We need five, because we had a board of eight. So with the majority, am I looking at you like you would know about these things?
Is this change for feelings?
Well, I know the law of majority in the state is a majority of the board. For us to pass a motion, the majority has to be, has to vote in the like. So if I have nine members, five people have to say, yes, we agree with that motion. Now, to advance minutes or approve minutes, is it a majority of the people at the table tonight, or is it a majority of, like, joint authority?
I'm going to stick my neck out a little bit and say that, one, it probably depends on your rules of procedure, but secondly, probably for an administrative action like that, a majority of the quorum is acceptable. You're right, to pass on any...
Right. Any motions or anything.
Any quasi-judicial action or call, then it would be a majority of the people.
I still...
So...
Our rules of procedure are silent on the point.
Yeah, we don't have a...
I'm scurrying up and...
All right, let's think here for a second, because we really only have four people who were here that night. I think in advancing minutes that it... Well, this isn't impacting any subdivision regulations or anything.
I just recommended, there was nothing done.
Better yet. Why couldn't we pass something that wasn't done?
That's all that's here.
Okay, I say for now, we let it stand. If I find out otherwise, we can revisit these meetings. But we had a motion, we had a second, we had a discussion. Thank you, Ron. If you're not doing anything, you ought to be able to, okay?
Yeah, but okay.
It's because you weren't here. It's because you weren't here.
We talked about the...
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that one doesn't have to say draft anymore. You can get that right, too.
That's what you should have on your new stuff. It doesn't change it.
Right, exactly. So I can sign it if you have a space for it.
I do have a claim for you.
Yeah. Okay. Let's get to our guest here, so we don't bore him with any more of this minor league stuff here.
He's smiling.
I borrow your pen for a second.
You little thief.
He's smiling now. He hasn't, you know, he talked to Batrim today. I'm surprised he showed up at all, to be honest with you.
I got a little...
Thank you, Jessica. So we've already said hi to Jim Sullivan, Director of the BRCRC, and welcome, once again, officially.
Thank you.
And as most of you know, the BRCRC and Jim have been hired as our consultant to help us in the area of bylaw change regarding the Housing and Economic Development sections of our town plan and any bylaws that we need to change as necessitated by that, those two sections of the town plan. I believe that's exactly how the Municipal Planning Grant reads. It's just those two sections, and we'll get through those. Those are the two biggest, medias ones, and then we'll move on. What I failed to do was ask everybody to, in the past month, because I still wasn't sure if you were going to get the gig or not, was to go through and begin reading the town plan and the action steps at the end of each section, which kind of guides us as to, you should revisit this bylaw, or that bylaw, or this bylaw. The other thing I'd like everybody to do for the next meeting is to go through kind of the bylaws, in case we missed anything that needs to be changed now that we've updated the town plan. So as Chairman, that's all I wanted to say before I turn the floor over to you, so you can tell us your expectations of us and what you need us to do.
Very good. Thank you very much. Yeah, no, looking forward to this project. It should be an interesting one. I've read through the plan and the recommendations related to land use regulations, and have also gone through the zoning bylaw and embedded subdivision regulations a couple of times, and made a number of notes and my own thoughts and observations. And, you know, the only thing that I would say to expand upon your remarks about implementing the town plan and the couple of sections of the town plan that specifically referenced is that, you know, when we're looking at Housing and Economic Development, it's kind of hard to pigeonhole those into particular, you know, bylaw provisions, because a lot of the bylaw procedural standards across all the districts potentially affect Housing and Economic Development.
Sure.
So I certainly, you know, flagged the things that were specifically mentioned in the plan, but, you know, I have a number of, I have a number of observations, kind of high-level at this point observations, that, you know, I'd like to bounce off you tonight.
Fantastic.
But if you, maybe if you guys want to first, you know, take a minute to let me know what, you know, you think the priorities are through the bylaw and/or any specific issues or problems that have arisen in recent months and years that I should also flag, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Why don't we go around? You have some ideas as to what you think we should change or do concerning our bylaws?
I haven't. I just got your instructions to go through the town plan and observe at the end of each chapter, the steps that are recommended, and I haven't done that, so, recently, months ago.
But personally, like, I would, we may have zoning in a process that is too strict to encourage economic development, or to encourage a lot of economic development. So I want to see a balance between encouraging more economic development, but not at any cost, not giving up regulation to just let anybody in and do whatever they want here in Pownau. I mean, that's kind of a 30,000-foot view of what I'm looking for.
Right.
Yeah. That's what I meant. Any other major concerns? Well, let Ronnie go first, if he's got...
I'm going to, I've got to do like Sid, I got to go to the end of them things and kind of read it over.
Okay.
I know we do need some ideas, but I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that before I got here, so I'd rather think about it a little bit.
If you're like me, Ron, you'd rather not sound silly for not being prepared.
That's right.
I really, I really wasn't putting anybody on the spot. I mean, as we've, as we've been going through the town plan for the last 30 years, I thought maybe some stuff would come to mind like that, but at least 30 years. Mr. Walker's our town administrator, he's also, he also formed the Economic Development Board, and I'm sure he'd like to weigh in.
I wondered if you'd consider a thought of a combination, like a CI zone, commercial-industrial zone, broader definition, allow the market more flexibility, rather than commercial than industrial, and then you're separating that out, the matrix is even bigger, and everything is kind of pigeonholed. It would have to be well-written, and the point of not having anything at any price.
Yeah, that's right.
I just thought I'd throw that out.
Good. Appreciate it. Thank you, Michael. So I think when everybody has had a chance to do that, and like I said, Jim, my fault, I should have said, everybody dig out your new town plan and let's take a look at it and get going on this thing.
Well, you want me to give you guys something to think about?
Yeah. See how you're, see how you're getting us off the hook right there?
So, so here...
Mike, may I have Jessica's pen?
No, I've got more. I have to keep a collection.
I got it.
I couldn't do that to Julie, I'd just get chips under the table. There was no, it was days ago. There, I got pens. You need pens?
Not saying I'm not going to be, but...
So, you know, first of all, I think, you know, as we're going through this, it makes a certain amount of sense after today to start dealing with this kind of in order, you know, like, section by section, and drafting some proposed revisions, and then talking about them and refining them as we go along, just to kind of keep it order. Some of it is kind of fun to bounce around and...
Yeah, you bet.
But it also makes it a little more difficult to remember where you left off, so...
You mean town plan section?
Well, the bylaws, really, you know, like, start out with, you know, Section 2 and 3, you know, and draft some...
In the actual bylaws themselves.
In the actual bylaws, and then move on to Section 4, and then start dealing with, you know, the specific zoning districts and things like that.
And at the same time, going back to make sure we're touching on all the action plans that said, consider changing the bylaws, because really, we need those two to be the same when the day's done.
Yeah, no, I mean, when you get to the, when you get to the end, you're right. I mean, you, one of the things that you have to check the box on when you're going to approve and adopt your zoning land use revisions is whether or not it's consistent with the plan.
With the town plan.
So you do, it's very...
It's easier said than done, by the way.
Yeah. So here's a few, here's a few things to throw out, to think about. So in going through your plan, you've got, I think you're, by and large, your land use districts, you know, make sense. You might want to do like Michael suggested, and, you know, maybe create some kind of a combination, commercial-industrial thing. We can talk about that. In going through the bylaws, I think that the way that the land uses that are permitted or not permitted are laid out within the sections, the district regulation sections, works pretty well. You know, it lists things that are allowed with no permit, things that are allowed, you know...
Conditionally, permit.
Permit, and with DRB approval, and with conditional use approval, and so on. The thing that kind of, I think complicates the bylaw immeasurably, if I were trying to be the zoning administrator, is the thing that was probably designed to simplify it, which is the land use matrix, which is in Section 7, and includes page after page after page of very specific uses and when and where they're allowed.
You want to see us going through it when we have a question.
You're Clintonian zoning.
It's very much that. And, you know, the movement lately is to kind of get away from that level of specificity and to generalize things a bit more, and to deal more with, you know, kind of performance standard issues.
Their effect.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, kind of the appearance and the impact of the uses, rather than trying to specify, you know, hundreds of uses and where they're allowed and not allowed, so more general standards, like, you know, retail, as opposed to listing 52 different kinds of retail, or professional, and light industrial, heavy industrial, as opposed to listing all them specifically. So something to think about, you know, as we're going through it, that, you know, maybe we can, we can explore that.
Absolutely.
You wanted to start with Sections 1 and 2, and I think the first thing we have to do is redraft Section 2, the purposes section.
Okay.
Because I think, I think we want to emphasize the charge that we have, that this, these bylaw amendments should help in fostering appropriate economic development in town.
Yeah, no, I agree. And, you know, I mentioned that in the qualification statement letter that I submitted, because I think one of the, the first things we need to do is both in the general purpose statement with the bylaw, and in the purpose statement of most of the individual districts, we should highlight economic development more, because it doesn't really appear there prominently now.
Right.
So, yeah, I couldn't agree with you more.
It just says now, "The appropriate development of all lands."
Right, right.
Talks about economy and other things, too.
Well, the standard, the standard police power bylaw, zoning bylaw, talks about public health, safety, morals. I mean, those are the traditional things that were supposed to be advanced by zoning.
Right.
And I think we just changed the emphasis. Much of what's here is okay, but we want to change the emphasis, I think.
Yep. No, I agree.
Agreed.
That certainly is doable, and I think it's important, you know, in how people interpret the bylaws. So some other ideas I had going through it, to think about as you're reading through it, is there's some sections in the bylaw that, I want your input on how important you think they are, that they're still there, or if there's a way to simplify them.
Because we strike them all together.
Right. So the first one of those that kind of jumped out at me was an old planning favorite from my early days in planning, you know, 30 or 40 years ago, the old transferable development rights.
I was going to say that. Please, let's lose that. Let's vote on that right now.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, yeah, I used to go to conferences back in the 1980s, where a lot of the presentations were on TDRs and trying to give some examples of where they've been applied and used. There weren't very many of them, no matter where you were. Yeah, I mean, the concept is great, it's an economic efficiency thing, you know? It's like, it's like, it's trying to do what you really want to do, is to concentrate development in certain areas of town and preserve other areas while at the same time not taking anybody's property rights away.
Yeah.
So you transfer that development from one area to another. The problem with them is, is no one ever seems to use them. They've been in bylaws in our region for all those decades, and I don't know if anybody's ever used them. And the other, the other thing is it creates some administrative and record-keeping challenges, potentially.
Sure does. And those are outlined, actually, in the bylaws, some of those challenges.
Yeah, so I'm like, something to think about, I mean, you know, if, you know, if you guys think that it's something you still want to keep in there, I suspect that the provisions that are in there are probably okay, maybe could be adjusted a little bit.
Yeah.
But if it's something that we can move away from, then, you know, I don't think you would be losing out, and you'd be simplifying things a little bit.
When we rewrote this back in 2011, we just left it the way it was before. I mean, there was no discussion about it. It was like, with the exception of what's a TDR, I mean, there was some discussion of it like that.
So anyway, I mean, TDR is great, you know, but like I said, I think there's probably some other ways to get it simplified.
Right.
You know, especially conserving open land now, you know, I think, you know, the land trust model has probably been more successful than compensating people for their rights.
Trading your rights.
Than the TDR.
Sure.
Again, we can talk about that when we get to it. A minor thing is, is the section on cluster subdivision, which is, I think, still a good idea, they have.
3.11.
Right, 3.11. The statute, the Planning and Development Law, you know, now really refers to those things all under the umbrella of Planned Unit Development, or PUDs. So I don't think that you necessarily need to change a lot of the provisions in the cluster subdivision. I think if you, we probably should take a look at, if you want to keep it, you know, kind of putting it within the context of the statutory language about PUDs. And, you know, the statute, we used to have PRDs, Planned Residential Developments, and Planned Unit Developments. They since merged them all into Planned Unit Developments, I think with the idea of trying to encourage mixed use in Planned Unit Developments. But you can still keep them as strictly, you know, residential subdivisions, too, if you want to.
Okay.
So it's just one to flag and to look at, think about. Sections 3.12 and 3.13 deal with provisions on wind energy and commercial telecommunications facilities. So since, you know, since the bylaw was written, there have been some changes to the statute that I think, having gone through the town plan recently, you know, the importance of having strong provisions in the plan covering those things, because the Planning and Development Act has created exemptions from local zoning regulation for wind energy, any renewable energy development, or any, that's subject to review under Section 248, which is basically anything that's connected to the grid.
Yep.
And for anything that is subject to Section 248A review, which is any commercial telecommunications facilities. So you can't really regulate them through your zoning, but you should have, you know, strong standards in your plan.
Sure.
Get the so-called substantial deference. There may still be some value to keeping, like, an appendix with these things in your regulations, because your plan might, you know, you might refer back to those.
I think it was done, Jim, so that those developers that had the decency to come before us, even though they didn't have to, we wanted to have some guidance for them as to...
Yeah, no, I think that's good. I think, I think that's good. I think that it could confuse things a bit if you tried to insert it into the bylaws and, you know...
Right, exactly.
Say, you are required to get a zoning permit for this one, you're... Say, "You are required to get a zoning permit for this one." You're removed from doing that.
You're not, yeah.
So, you know.
We'll take your money if you really want to go through that.
Just be above board about it. You know, like I say, I think that a lot of the standards in regulations are very good, but I think we should be clear about, you know, what the town can and can't require.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So another one that grabs my attention, starting with the natural resource protection stuff, was the wetland overlay district. So there's a lot of really compelling stuff in there about wetlands protection, all of which is really under the, believe me, I know, because we struggle with them all the time, that the jurisdiction of the State Department of Environmental Conservation and their wetland protection rules. And I think that you probably could save a lot of space in your bylaws.
Just referring to their rules.
And just referencing the state wetland regulations, and the fact that people need to apply for a state wetland conditional use determination, if there's any issue with wetlands on their property.
Right.
You know, you can try to deal with this, but I mean, this would basically say, "Your zoning administrator needs to make determinations about, you know, when wetlands are present, and what the impacts on the wetlands would be."
Without the education to be able to do that.
Set it off to the, the state's gonna review it anyway.
Sure.
You know, so.
Just defer to them on that.
I like, we can save some complexity in the local permitting process, I think, maybe.
We'd cut this book down to about twelve pages.
Well, we already got about twenty pages on it.
And we won't be blamed for this. That's the best part.
Now, there's the, the other one that's in there, it's really interesting. I don't think anybody in the region has anything quite right, but is the next section six-three, the conservation overlay district.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, laudable, but you know, I think that, you know, we probably could, you could probably almost get rid of that, too, and add some of the protections into the review standards, like in the performance standards of the bylaw.
Okay.
You know, so instead of saying, "In these defined geographic areas, you know, you're restricted, and you have to go through these processes," instead they say, "If there's a development proposed that's going to have a potential impact on certain environmental resources, they have to be considered in the review process." So kind of like, you know, one less overlay district to worry about.
Right.
Overlay districts, they're okay, but they're confusing for people a lot of times. So, I mean, I think we could do that, because I want to talk a little bit more at the end of my comments here on performance standards, and how we might use those a little bit differently.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Then, the other one, back in the section seven, where it, where a lot of the dimensional standards are for the different districts.
Oh, and back in the matrix.
Yeah, back in the, the last page of that. I think that's pretty good. I mean, I, if we do move away from that big, multi-page matrix, and kind of bring the more general uses back into the individual district sections, I think it probably makes sense to have the dimensional standards embedded in those districts, kind of district by district, rather than having it in a table.
A separate table.
Right.
And, you know, start thinking about, you know, how you're treating density, especially for mixed uses or multiple uses in an existing building, and for multifamily, and especially in those mixed-use and commercial districts, where, especially where you've got, in the village districts, where you've got access to the public sewer system. And, you know, a lot of these, you know, density requirements were really originally driven...
By septic systems.
By septic systems.
Right.
And, you know, and if you don't have that kind of soil-based limitation, you know, you could look at, you know, basically saying, "Okay, you know, we want to have, maybe you want to have a minimum lot size in a district of, you know, X thousand square feet, or whatever, and you want to have, you know, limited to one or two principal buildings, or whatever." But rather not get so hung up on X number, X thousand square feet per use or dwelling unit, you know, just kind of go with the setback requirements, coverage requirements that you might have, you know, things like that, rather than, because people get really confused. They say, "Well, what if I've got a store with two apartments above it, you know, how big does the lot have to be?" And it doesn't really matter if you just got one building, and you've got a public sewer system.
Yeah, that can be confusing, absolutely.
So, you know, that's just one to think of, about maybe how we handle the, kind of, the density with mixed uses and multifamily dwellings. And it might be different, you know, district by district, and certainly when you're out in the rural residential, you know, that, then you can get back a little bit to...
Ronnie, do we have a, do we have a graphic, a plan of what parts of town are covered by sewer? Is it on a piece of paper, as opposed to just the memory of people who did it?
Must be somewhere.
Oh, it's, well, I didn't bring it with me, but there's a book on the whole thing.
I think we probably have a sewer service area map somewhere.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, anyway. It's just in the villages. Most of it's pressure lines.
Right.
The villages have got the town sewer. South panel's all, that's all on the sewer.
Right.
The north panel, down in the villages, on the sewer, but nothing else. Not, you can get away from that.
Right.
Like even Cedar Hill and stuff like that, that isn't on it, but this development is.
Cedar Hill goes through Cedar Hill, but they're not on it.
They can't get on it. They can't get pressure line. That's the trouble with a lot of it.
Right.
You go up Skiffery Road, it's a pressure line.
Yeah.
That was, that was a big mistake, I think.
They went by no new development, so they blew lines like Pam Yankee's place there, fourteen acres. Can't have anything there.
No, all the way down to three forty-six.
Yeah.
Barrington's, all that property. They can't sell no property. Unless they put a wire, put a septic line.
To get, to get access to the sewer.
Dump the straight pipe, it went into the river.
Michael, question for you. Does the Economic Development Committee, have they looked at where the sewer runs and doesn't run? Have they, okay, all right. So when we get that, we should...
They should have it.
They should have it as well.
Yeah, it's one of the, one of the real, you know, economic development assets that town has, is that sewer system. You know, I mean, it's, it's, most towns do not have that.
Lucky, they're lucky.
You know, and consequently, extremely limited.
Need water.
Yes, yeah.
They were going mad trying to find test well sites because of that system.
Yep. Okay.
So, you know, other than that, I think, you know, when you're starting, when we're getting into the dimensional requirements, I think, looking at those in conjunction with some of the performance standards for the various commercial industrial and mixed uses that might be allowed, you're kind of thinking maybe about, you know, what is the form, we talk, you know, now about form-based development. So what is the form you're really trying to pursue with those things? Like, you want, you know, a lot layout, maybe with the building closer to the street, and, you know, a certain, you know, landscaping, and parking behind, and lighting, and all those types of things. So maybe like a combination of, you know, some of those things you can accomplish pretty well with the dimensional requirements. So for commercial industrial uses, kind of think about how those affect the form of the development. And I say that in the context of dimensional requirements and performance standards, and especially the performance standards, because you have now that relate to building and site design, among the various performance standards that you've got listed. And then you've got, juxtaposed to that, you've got, as I mentioned, this array of uses from, you know, things that don't require any permit, to things that the zoning administrator can issue a permit for.
Right.
Things that are permitted uses with DRB approval, and conditionally permitted uses. And in general, that's okay, but my assessment of the bylaw is that it would, I think, help your economic development objectives, as well as simplify everybody's life, if we kind of got away from the conditional use thing a little bit, or a lot.
Yeah.
And made things, you know, permitted uses with Development Review Board site plan approval. And not get into this, you know...
Putting seven different conditions on.
Well, yeah, well, you got these, you know, character of the area that are really kind of, you know, general, you know, subject to interpretation.
Yeah, it's the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, and if you said, you know, "No, these uses are permitted," but, you know, the only thing that's required is the DRB has to approve the site plan, and the site plan needs to address these performance standards.
I think that's a great idea. I can tell you that in Massachusetts, a site plan reviewing authority cannot disapprove a project on the grounds that it doesn't comply. They can send them back to redesign it, to bring it into closer compliance with the site plan requirements, but they can't absolutely deny it. So it becomes, it's not a very, it's not a great hammer.
Mm-hmm.
You have to encourage people.
I think, you know, in Vermont, you know, you could, you could deny it.
Oh, you could, okay.
With a, you know, with a site plan that doesn't meet your addressed performance standards. You know, they amended the Planning and Development Act a few years ago to expand the site plan review jurisdiction, authority of the Planning Commission, and/or, in your case, the Development Review Board, whereas it used to be really limited to, you know, site plan review, looked at traffic access, and parking, lighting, pedestrian circulation access, things like that. They generalized it now, so you can consider, you know, quite a bit more than that. But I think it's...
Aesthetics.
Yeah, yeah. That's, you know, the building and site design thing. So you certainly can do that. But I think that the important thing is say, you know, "This use is permitted. These are the clearly articulated, you know, standards that the town wants to meet," you know, without, you know, without being crazy. Yeah, I wouldn't get into like a lot of architectural design details, because I think that's way over the top. But, you know, the general indication of, you know, like, the height of buildings, the position of buildings on the lot, the quality of the landscaping, the location of parking, things like that. Those things, if you specify those pretty clearly between the dimensional requirements and the performance standards, and say, "Hey, as long as you meet these requirements, the DRB will approve your project."
Right, without worrying about five different conditions.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, there might...
Can I interrupt you for a second? I think, Michael, you had a question.
Would that then eliminate the need for re-permitting every so often for...
Well, that was a condition re-permitting, in that case you're talking about.
Yeah.
Because of neighbors, I believe. So, yeah, it might.
Well, any conditions, you know, you can still, you can still apply conditions, but, you know, the conditions have to be related specifically to those.
To those standards.
Standards, whereas, you know, in the conditional use world, you know, you've got these, well, you apply conditions related to whatever the character of the area is, which nobody really knows too well. I'm not saying, you know, I think there might still be some use or application for conditional use, but I think it could be radically reduced.
Limited use.
You know, it could be, you know, maybe you want to retain those for, you know, heavy industries, for example, you know, where there's bigger issues and concerns. But I think by and large, like Bennington, I think, you know, we're working on their bylaw update now, too. And a few years back, they got rid of conditional uses pretty much.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
So, I, you know...
There may be some grandfathering involved in the case you're talking about.
We got into this quite a bit with the Amherst professor.
Dr. Mullin?
Yeah. You know, less hot top, less parking spaces, setbacks not so far back, up closer to the road.
To the road, yeah.
Parking behind.
Parking behind.
One driveway entrance, interior access roads, as opposed to lots of curb cuts.
The gas station down around Chatham, they resubmitted the whole thing, and they loved it. You know, they put before the DRB something, and it got changed.
Exactly. So if you provide that kind of clearance in your performance standards, and the developer follows it, you know, then you get a permit.
And everybody wins, too. Which is generally a better development for him, as a result of that.
They change flipping it over.
Sure.
They park it.
And I don't think, you know, you know, you talk about these performance standards and dimensional standards maybe being a little bit more detailed, but I'm not talking about creating, you know, some of these towns are putting together these form-based codes, which are, like Pittsfield, I think Pittsfield is working on one. And they, you know, they can, you know, you kind of need a full-time professional staff to administer up here, because those are supposed to make development super easy. You know, without, you don't even need DRB review, because you can just kind of go down and check.
Check off the box.
And say, "Oh, yep, they did everything. Here's your permit, hand it to them administratively." But the codes are, tend to be extraordinarily complicated. So we've been kind of advocating for a form-based light.
Yeah.
You know, like, kind of simplify the uses, don't get so crazy about the uses, have some clear, you know, form-based performance standards and design guidelines, you know, but still allow, you know, some review by, and support review by the Development Review Board. So I, I mean, I think, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think that can help facilitate, you know, economic development. And, you know, when I think about economic development, and we talked about it the other night at the meeting, it's, yeah, it's business, it's business growth in the community, and it's also, you know, housing growth, because it's really...
They go hand in hand.
Housing, they really can support that, the business growth, too. So, you know, that is all I had on my notes for general stuff. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, and, well, those are the important things. And I know that the project focuses on, you know, economic development, commercial industrial housing. There's also just, you know, a number of housekeeping changes that I think we should include as well. You know, I've made notes on those, too.
Absolutely.
And they may be a little bit outside the scope, but it would be silly.
My particular favorite is the section on variances.
Yeah.
Absolutely incomprehensible.
So, so that's one, that's one of them.
And if you can't figure it out, I...
I made a, I made a note on that. You know, the problem with variances, as I say, the problem with variances is that if you follow those variance criteria strictly, I don't think you could ever...
You could never get one.
Get a variance.
That's right.
That's right. But, so, but you can't change that, because that's in statute. However, recognizing that problem.
Yeah.
You know, the legislature did add a provision for what they call waivers, which is variances light, you know. And I think it's a really good idea to put a waiver down.
I'll look for it. The other thing is, that our sign section says that if your sign exceeds certain dimensions, and complexity, and lighting, and one thing and another, then the DRB has to give you a variance for it. It's not a conditional use.
Not a conditional use.
You have to give them a variance.
Because it's a permanent.
Or you can't get a variance, so. Our bylaw is internally inconsistent.
Yep. Yeah, no, that is the case. And I mean, I, you know, I'm on a DRB myself, and I kind, so I experienced it firsthand. And if people come in for variances in the zoning board or the development review boards, they typically ask perfectly logical questions, like, you know, "Well, what's the impact of that going to be?" You know, "What do your neighbors think about it?" None of those types of things are in the bylaw.
That's right. They're not supposed to be considered.
Right, yeah. They're all good questions, they're just not in there.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, it makes a lot of sense to put, you know, so if somebody wants to put a small addition on their house, you know, that's not going to have any significant impact on anybody other than it encroaches a couple feet on a setback, but it's, you know, within a certain size. That's what the idea of waivers is, so we can put waivers, a waiver provision in the bylaw.
Four point two point four point two.
Variance light.
Four two four two.
Variance light. Okay.
So that was, those were the, my high-level overview things to get you thinking about stuff as we start going through this. And I don't know how you want to handle the next meeting, if you want to come back and reflect back on that, and then have me start drafting...
Yeah, I think we should.
...provisions, section by section.
We have to look at our notes, and go back to the sections, and read them, and then, like you say, reflect back on it, and then turn you loose on some stuff for us to...
Sure. And I think, you know, I, you know, I'm happy to, you know, take a shot at drafting some language, section by section, and sending it to you in advance of the meeting.
It's the way we did it with Michael, basically. You know, he continuously sent his stuff, and say, "Here's..." You know, he continuously sent us stuff and say, here's kind of a synopsis of what we talked about, I changed the wording in this section, tell me what you think. Is that approaching what everybody thinks? And we were kicking around, sometimes tearing it down, sometimes let it go through. So, so that's fine, too. We can do a combination of both those things as well. I mean, the risk of us going through and then putting our input in, you may have done something already, and then you have to do it over again. You're probably going to have to do that anyway, so.
No, that's fine. I mean, that's, you know, that's, I mean, we're, we're here, you know, me and the BCRC, we're here to put, to regulatory language, what you want. So, so, you, you know, we'll, we'll offer suggestions and maybe make it easier for you by drafting some things, but ultimately, you know, whatever it is that you decide you want to do, is we'll do our best to get it into bylaws.
Well, and I think we have to look at one and two, like you said. I mean, I think we need kind of a, you know, a little, something a little bit more descriptive than, than what we have here.
Who's got the best zoning bylaw in Bennington County?
Must be, have to be one of the ones that I worked on.
I know, I was going to say. Pat him on the back before he breaks his arm, would you?
He didn't say which.
You know, they're really, they're all-
Turn the camera off for a minute?
They're all so different, you know, because, because the towns are so different, you know? Like I said, we, you know, Bennington wants to make some changes to theirs, some significant changes to theirs now, but theirs is organized really well. You know, I kind of like, they have like, you know, one sheet for each district, it's kind of, it's well organized, it's easy to use. There's definitely some things they can do to improve it or-
How about something comparable to Ponnell?
North Bennington?
Um, North Bennington's, I did theirs, so that one's, that one's great.
So that's worth, so that, but I mean-
But, you know, I like-
That's worth a look for us to-
We worked on, last year, two years ago, like, you know, we did a re, an overhaul of Shaftesbury's regulations, a kind of a similar size and character of town.
Spread out like-
So, you know, that might be one to look at, too. You know, they kept, they kept some things, you know, a little bit that are different from their old version, but, you know, definitely took a, took a crack at trying to streamline theirs, too.
Shaftesbury and Arlington probably dislike us because we have the sewer system that they'd like.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, both of those towns, that's been an issue. You know, South Shaftesbury Village has been, I, I tell the story, it's like, I was in a, when I first started with the BCRC, over thirty years ago.
Wow.
I was, I was sitting in Coal Hall with the Shaftesbury Planning Commission, talking about South Shaftesbury Village, and trying to figure out how to accommodate more development, mixed uses, commercial uses, you know? And the struggle at the time was the lack of a sewer system.
Right.
Or some improved way of wastewater disposal. And at that meeting, it was funny, because it was when they were working on, I think it was Act 200 at the time, Governor Kuna, Madeline Kuna at the time, that was her thing. I mean, she, she actually was touring around-
That was thirty years ago.
She like walked in to the meeting with her Commissioner of Housing and Community Development, sat down at the table and, and like, and like listened to and participated in the discussion. And then years later, I heard her giving a speech, and she goes, I remember years ago sitting down in a local planning commission in Shaftesbury, Vermont, talking about it. And, yeah, it's funny, because that was the issue back then, and that's the issue now.
Right, I was going to say, there wasn't anything done on that one.
No, you know, they, they've, they've looked at it, they've studied it, they're looking at it again, and Arlington is likewise looking at it.
So the whole downtown Arlington and South Shaftesbury, they're all looking at that?
You know, not necessarily now looking at, you know, a sewer system like, like you've got, you know, but some different options for wastewater disposal.
Right, right.
Will let them grow a little.
Yeah, yeah, it would help, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's big, it's, it's, it's big, you know, you know, we've talked about a lot of our state association, it's like, you know, all of these state goals and directives and, you know, almost mandates are like, we're supposed to be encouraging a particular development pattern.
Oh, yeah.
That is impossible in most of our communities.
The way they're laid out.
Because of the lack of, the lack of infrastructure.
Sure.
So, yeah, so it's a big, it's a big issue, and like I say, you guys definitely have a leg up. I mean, there's limitations with your sewer system, the way it's designed, but it was probably designed that way for a reason, too, is to try to concentrate development.
That's right.
But at least you have it.
Correct.
So many places don't, so. Anyway, that's a little off-topic, but interesting.
Oh, but pertinent to changing these things, so. So we could also look at Shaftesbury's recent bylaws and, or their bylaws in North Bennington as well, and then come back, let's go over our notes and compare the sections, those first couple of sections, and let's be prepared to roll up our sleeves next time.
Yeah, so, good, yeah, you guys give me some more feedback next time, and then, you know, I can try to, you know, try to get a drafting, you know, a couple of sections at a time going forward, month to month. Obviously gets a little bit complicated when you're making changes to one section that affect another section.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
So it may not be quite that simple or smooth, but that'll be the general course, course of the work.
And from a logistics point of view, my intention was to have you come on regular meeting day and not have special meetings for that.
Sure.
When we were working on the town plan, it was just, for several years, we had two meetings per month, and a lot of people stopped speaking to me at that point, so.
I have, I have a sufficient number of nights out that I don't probably need anymore.
You don't need any extra ones yourself. But I, but I'm thinking, we don't have to spend two-hour sessions on this stuff either, you know? I mean, we can get right down to it on a section or on whatever you bring back, mark it up, and let's go to the next week.
Yeah, if I, if, if it works out that I can get some language to you, you know, at least a week before the meeting.
Sure.
It gives everybody a chance to-
Sure, it's what Michael used to do.
Put question marks and highlights on it, and we can focus right in on those areas.
Perfect.
So, I think I should be pretty good, I mean, I have to say, like, the, you know, the next couple of months are my, like, busy months?
Yeah.
If I have busier months than others, because I also have to kind of manage the organization.
Oh, yeah.
It's our, it's our year end, so, it, you know, at the end of June, so I've got-
A little of that administrative stuff going on.
All that kind of stuff. But at the same time, this is, I'm working on Woodford zoning bylaws now, but I'm just kind of wrapping that one up.
Okay.
Hopefully. So, you know, that, I don't know, doing a little bit with Stamford, but this is my main-
Woodford had public hearings yet?
No.
That's next. They're, they're close.
They should be pretty close. I put a little note that I, optimistically, I wrote in my calendar, finish last Woodford zoning bylaw revision by Friday.
Wow.
So, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, keep your fingers crossed, you're right, you're right.
So, yeah, but, so I should have, you know, those projects, I'll be able to concentrate more on this one.
Excellent, excellent. Any, anything else for Jim?
Oh, thanks for coming down.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, I got one thing.
Oh, sorry, Ronnie.
The state, years ago, I was on, went back when they had just had a zoning board here, first thing, not all this elaborate stuff you get now. Anyway, it was, of course, we didn't have no sewer system or nothing.
Yeah.
Which a sewer system, as far as I'm concerned, gives it, which is more flexibility for the town. But doesn't the state, it used to now, there was a small lot over here, they told a guy he couldn't build there, the lot was too small. But the state said, look, you gotta, you, this is what you come back from the state, you discourage building on smaller lot, but you cannot, because if you do, then you render it worthless, not that you, which makes sense to me.
Yeah.
You know, while you guys are dog running, you know? But what I'm trying to say is, does the state still have any-
Jurisdiction?
I assume not probably right in where the sewer thing is in the villages, but in these outlaying areas, you know, hour one, hour two, if they got some, like, down there in New Ashford there, of course, that was a town that they built recently, most of it. You gotta have three acres there, period, you know? Well, they had plenty of land, and it was no big deal. But, I mean, now here, with this, and we've got a lot of lots, it wasn't bought up, and some people always got to face this way and that way. And there's a lot of lots in this town that, you look like juke shop booths.
Yeah.
If you're going to put a house on it, you better design something that's going to fit.
That's right.
Unless it ain't going to fit on the lot.
Legos.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's a good question, and it's one that we can certainly look at in the regulations. There's, there's, there's a requirement in state statute that's reflected in your bylaws that may need to be updated, that, you know, pre-existing, so-called pre-existing small lots can, can be developed, as long as, you know, they meet the, you know, setback requirements and things, and, and then you get into the variance questions.
Right.
Potentially. But, so if you're in a, if you have a, you know, a quarter or a fifth acre lot in a, you know, in a, in a zone that has a one acre minimum lot size, you potentially, you can still develop.
If it predates zoning.
If it, if it predates that, yeah, you can, you can, yeah, you can't create it and then develop it post zoning, but if it predates that zoning, you can develop it. The challenge that you're going to have is, as you mentioned, you know, it's not so much an issue where you've got sewer, but if you're, it's hard, and much less than about three quarters of an acre to get-
To get a well in a septic system.
And it's, we usually find that it's about three quarters of an acre, given the separation distance, is not much potential. That, that's kind of, that's, you know, that's not the state land use law, that's the state, you know, water supply and wastewater disposal regulations. But, you know, and the only other part of the statute that's relevant to that is, you know, even if you're, even if you do have that stuff, is like, usually, there's this thing down to like, I think an eighth of an acre, if a lot's less than an eighth of an acre, there can be a further restriction on development of a lot, but even that has some qualifiers, so we can check.
I was just curious, because, I mean, that happened, it happened right over here.
Yeah.
And the guy did build a place, and he got in trouble later, because he put a garage on it.
It's still there, though, Joe Rhodes.
Yeah, but he had to pay a fine.
Oh, that was Joe's.
Fifteen hundred, but, that was part of the garage.
Was that a water and a septic problem, though?
No, it was a lot size, period.
Lot size.
Yeah.
Right on the corner.
And it did, and we had zoning at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Matter of fact, well, that wouldn't have been a water issue then, because, well, that used to be on this private pond over here that crossed the road.
Okay.
Most of Ponnell Center was on that gravity feed system years ago. Now they all got wells, but, there are places, some of the lots are pretty small.
Well, that was everybody's idea, do it and let them, let them complain.
It's supposed to be a hundred feet for a sewer.
I'll just build a dam. To the well.
To the well? That's human sewer, two hundred feet.
Do you want to drink your own septic?
Yeah.
And, you know, let's, god, sense the-
Yeah, a lot of people don't know that.
It is one of the things, if you do want to, you know, you know, building a house that you could just squeeze onto one of those lots, and then you decide in the future that, you know, you want a-
Yeah, well, that's what happened.
Garage or something.
You wanted to put a garage on here.
Then, then, yeah, then you probably put yourself in a situation where you have a hard time meeting setback requirements, and then, as was mentioned, you wouldn't be able to get a variance legally, because you would have created the hardship yourself, but-
Yeah, there you go.
Like the house.
Sold it.
You sold it?
When I was on that board years ago, they, they gave a quite a few variances years ago. But they stood their reason. The person, he buys a piece of land.
Yeah.
And, all right, he doesn't know what's under the dirt.
Yeah.
Very few people go there with a boring machine and bore down.
No, you buy the land, yeah.
Couldn't put it, couldn't, had to move the houses all edge, had to move the house about twelve feet.
And then it missed the setback, so they had a variance.
Well, you know, that's, that's the situation, I say, you could never get variance, but you could almost never get a variance. You know, the variance criteria are structured so that, you know, it has to be some issue with the physical condition of the lot that prevents you from, from developing the lot in conformance with zoning dimensional standards.
Well, we gave them the variance.
You know, and, and, you know, so there are occasions where you can do it, and, I mean, I would say, you know, awful lot of ZVAs and DRBs give out variances and find a way to make the variance criteria work. I just worry that if somebody were to challenge it, you know, and if, if the judge looked at the criteria-
Right.
They-
They throw it out. Well, in, I can't speak to Vermont, but I know in Massachusetts, if you get a variance, you have a twenty-day appeal period, during which time somebody can take an appeal. If they don't, you get the decision, you run to the Registry of Deeds, you record it, and it's good forever.
Yeah.
It can't be challenged.
Yeah, you run, you don't walk.
That's the same in Vermont. There's an appeal period, and if somebody doesn't appeal within that timeframe, they can't ever appeal, so it's as good as anything. And that, you know, and honestly, you know, even those questionable variances that are issued, you know, typically, you know, typically, very often, no one really cares, you know, the neighbors don't, they're dragging the house, so they go to nobody.
Ninety-nine out of a hundred times. It's that one that makes the newspapers.
But, yeah, it's, it's like, it's so much cleaner to have a different system for doing that, so that's why I like the waivers.
We wouldn't vet a steward's, and they were listed in there.
Without waivers down in that corner.
Yeah.
Railroad tracks.
Yeah.
What are our setbacks on railroad tracks?
They sent a letter to the railroad, I read that letter, railroad said, I don't care where you put it, as long as you don't put it on a railroad track.
Just don't put it on the tracks.
Put it right next to the track.
Don't put the gas tanks on the tracks.
Stop the train there and get out for coffee at Stewart's.
Railroad's another issue.
They still do.
Yeah, that's a big holdup with the wrist track, I see.
So do you.
I'm good, anybody else, any questions?
So your next meeting would be the twenty-first of May?
Of May, yeah.
Let me get that in my phone, so I don't have to email.
So you don't have to write Mike?
I'm sorry, Megan, I didn't mean to. That's how we stay in touch.
Right.
We have a meeting tonight, don't worry about it. Jim, thank you so much, we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
We look forward to getting this done and helping Ponnell with some economic and housing development.
Good.
Good. Thank you, good.
All right, thanks a lot, thanks.
All right. Okay, just a quick update on the Energy Committee. Michael, if you want to, we did it, right? I mean, the Select Board approved the basic formation-
Correct, but they, and we had two candidates, and just five of them, they thought, look, instead of appointing just these two candidates, we should define the committee, post it, and so anybody can apply to it. So, I sent it to you, I believe, that we-
It may have.
Yeah, you said it was okay, and I sent it-
Yeah, that's right, today I got it.
Right, so it's supposed to be here today.
Yeah, it looks fine, the description's fine.
I drafted up the purpose of the committee, and I just, I just wanted to do that.
Right.
And let the committee then delve into deeper what they want to do.
And the, I'm sorry, I was looking, I thought I skipped over a chunk of the agenda here. And the committee, we have two members that will, more than likely, of course, who have shown an interest for a very long time, our own Barbara TruWeber and Bill Barnes.
Bill Barnes.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've met the gentleman, but he's.
Yeah, Megan introduced me to him, and we had to catch him from falling off a treadmill. Other, literally, "Come on, you gotta meet him, gotta meet him." Okay, very good.
That's what happened to the former senate majority leader.
Yeah, he did, he fell, didn't he?
Fell off a treadmill.
Harry Reid.
Harry Reid, about killed himself.
He almost put his eye out.
It's easy to kill yourself on those things.
Yeah, I'm gonna give him up. Let's go, the rules of procedure, some, I think in your book, you got a, the current rules of procedure. If you don't, we'll get your copy. And then I had made some proposals, Megan had done some wordsmithing on it, and I don't know where we stand here. If we don't get to these tonight, it's okay, but I wanna get to them before the next meeting. I want our rules standing for almost the whole year at least. So does anybody have anything to add to those rules of procedure?
Where is the edited version?
Well, I.
Megan might have.
Here we go.
That's the, that's the one, that's the current one, Ronnie. And then there is somewhere.
I added some commas, Mike.
Rules of procedure amended. I got them, I think. I got a couple copies. See if there, no, there's none anywhere.
No, that was.
So here, you're, yeah, so, no, see, you were doing them right on the, on the original ones last time. But remember, I had handed out some that had. Yeah, that's the one. Here you go. So here, here's just some suggested, we can quickly highlight the suggestions that I was making on there, if you wanna compare them to the original one. You don't have that one?
Uh-uh.
There you go. Look at me with all these copies. I got another one. Jim, you got one with the corrections on it? You do. There's another one. Now, you know what I don't have? The original one. Yeah, I got it right here. Coming prepared, huh?
So, so where we.
So in a nutshell, just to bring Ronnie up to date here, the big changes are like in the attendance policy. We wanted to kind of button that up and make it more along the lines of the Family Medical Leave Act, so nobody could come back and sue us if we fire him over something like that.
And we took out the word "serious" in two places.
In most chip places, right.
We took out, so Megan, can I impose upon you, as we're going through this?
As the clerk?
Just as the clerk, would you just strike what we need to strike?
Okay, yeah, okay. And then there was an H added, "emergency services." I didn't really quite get that.
Oh, yeah, "emergency services," if somebody's sitting here and they're a fireman and they got, and they gotta leave, that's, we should excuse that.
Okay, so should I just write in here, "emergency services"? Do we, how do we wanna word that?
I just, you mean, put it down as like, A, B, C, F, G, H? And just put down "emergency services," and if you wanna put in parentheses, "fire, rescue."
Someone's sitting here and the Viva goes off, and I gotta go. What happens? You don't want the ambulance driver sitting here. I don't want him sitting there, just calling my house. That's right. That's common sense.
So "emergency services."
You want something more concrete, huh?
No, I mean, it just.
You can put "emergency services call."
Yeah, okay, that's.
There you go.
Thank you. I mean, just, ah, emergency, and ambulance drives up?
One of the things that I would like to do as your chairman for life, apparently, is at the bottom of that page is to request for leave of absence must be submitted to the chair in writing. Must include reason for the request and length of time of leave. The other thing is, and I think I put in here about absences, help me out, I would like members to, I don't know where it is, I know I had it here, to email me if you're not going to make it, and Jessica. In essence, I don't wanna have to be asking Jessica.
When a member is unable to attend the commission, chair, and the secretary must be notified. We could take that out of the passive voice.
Where is that, because I can't find it, I'm sorry.
Why don't we say, "If a member is unable to attend, they must notify, he or she must notify the."
Where are you? Yeah, where are you?
Under attendance, the first paragraph.
Oh, yeah, there it is, sorry. And my reason for doing that is because.
To ensure quorum.
Yeah, and I don't want Jessica to have to tell me who's showing up, who's not showing up, and why. Okay? Because that had gone on in the past, and I was like the last to know.
We're gonna do it to you all the time.
Julie complained.
I just took it out of the passive voice, is that okay with you? When a member is unable to attend, he or she must notify the commission chair.
You've forgotten more about this than I'll ever know. Like putting words together in the English language.
Instead of the commission, the chair must be notified. So, okay, good, we've got that. So "serious," "serious" is gone. Emergency services call.
Excuse me. The sentence, as it appears in my draft, doesn't make sense, because it says, "When a member is unable to attend, the commission chair and secretary must be notified twenty-four hours in advance to ensure quorum at the meetings."
Proper quorum.
Take out the word "to ensure quorum," has nothing to do, you don't get a quorum if you give notice or not.
Great point. Just strike that, strike.
In advance of the meeting.
No, just, okay, but in advance of the meeting, strike "to ensure quorum."
Yeah, well, I mean, it goes without saying, right? If we don't have enough people, I can call everybody up and say, "Stay home." We don't have enough people. Yankees are red-talking around, stay home.
I'll be right down.
And then, so there wasn't anything else on that page, was there anybody?
I don't believe.
So, and then.
See, the two first paragraphs, though, that's why we have to go through this each year, because we just voted on those two things, and we put them in our rules of procedure. They've always been there. Okay, Article Three, ground rules for an orderly meeting. My feelings here were, rather than have a member of the public go after or address somebody directly who he or she might not like, let him talk to the chairperson.
Okay, good.
That's what I meant with that.
Okay.
They have to be recognized, they have to identify themselves. That's all basic stuff. The select board does almost the exact same thing. They should be on topic and concise.
Is public, do we want the public, why is "public" capitalized? Oh, so you're gonna strike that whole section, question three? I mean, sentence number three.
He was looking at the Yankee score.
All comments and questions from the public are directed to the chair. What is, why is "from the public" in red and under?
Because it's different. So anything in red is different from our current policy.
Oh, I see, okay. Well, don't capitalize "public," it's not, okay.
Public with a small p.
That's right.
Comments are kept concise and on topic, comma, avoiding personal attacks.
Yep, sure.
Public comments may be limited to three minutes at the discretion of the chair.
At the discretion of the chair. And as I stated at our last meeting, some nights, if you have thirty people here, you're gonna have to limit it to three. If you have two people here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear everything they have to say.
You're going to be more tolerant.
More tolerant.
When either a member of the public, again, strike that capital, or a member of the planning commission has the floor, comma, they can expect to be heard and not interrupted.
Forgot all those commas.
And I don't know why, why is floor in?
That's Julie.
All right, take the.
Julie liberally used quotes and parentheses.
All the time.
She, yeah, and I'll stand up or hear her, she does that to make point. She's not grammatically correct, but she does.
She taught Donald Trump how to tweet, I think.
That's why she does it. It's definitely not grammatically correct, but she's just trying to make it stand out more to people that are.
God bless her if she did that.
Taking a peek at it.
No, with the quotes and the.
All right, so when either a member of the public with a small p or a member of the planning commission has the floor, no quotation marks, comma, they can expect to be heard and not interrupted, unless Ms. Randall is there. I have a tendency to interrupt.
I don't know about number six. I'm open, a suggestions person will only be called upon twice on the same topic.
At the discretion, I think that's fair.
But I don't think you need it at all. The chair runs the meeting.
Strike it.
All right.
You wanna listen to?
Strike it, you're right, you're right. There have been a lot of times, I've called on people three and four times, so.
Yeah, people get exercised.
And this unruly or disruptive persons will not be tolerated and will be asked to leave or physically thrown off by Ronnie.
Oh, all right, I'll have to see that.
So then, leave of absence is crossed off, because we put it back here on the second page instead. Conflicts of interest, I don't think we've ever had a conflict of interest section. It's highly recommended. I've read several different rules of procedure in different towns. They all have them. I agree with them.
So what we had done there was, "Commission members shall disclose any personal or business interest, comma, any adverse pecuniary interest," to use lawyer speak, comma.
Oh, you put that in there, yeah.
"Which may result in actual or perceived conflicts of interest."
Sounds good to me, is that all right?
"A member should recuse themselves from any motion, vote, or planning procedure with respect to the conflict."
I would say, I would take out "should" and put in "shall."
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Article Five.
Your favorite one.
I'm still troubled by that perceived, perceived thing, because of what did happen when several of us were accused of conflict of interest over the grant, when there was just simply a vote.
Hmm, so, yeah, the word perceived could be pretty broad, right?
Perceived by some people, and they were incorrect as to the actual legal definition of what a conflict.
The reason why perceived is there, I can tell you, is because it's to keep the commission above reproach or above criticism.
Yeah.
Even if there is a minor perception.
That's right. It's tilted that way.
Yeah.
People misuse conflict of interest.
Yes, they do.
People say, I've heard people on the select board say it's a conflict of interest, when it clearly isn't.
Right.
There's no adverse pecuniary.
It's a charge that you can levy against somebody to shut them up.
I know it, and that's why I'm not sure.
Well, I think it should stay.
Okay, here, as a lawyer, I think we listen to you.
I think we can always decide that as well. Like if somebody accuses you of another position, and they say, "We've, that could be perceived as being a conflict of interest," I think this board right here can say, "We don't agree with you on that." And allow it to stand.
Isn't it, my understanding of a conflict of interest is there needs to be some gain on the part of the.
But it doesn't have to be monetary. It can be power, or influence, or things like that, so. So.
Your head could swell up if you had this butter.
See? So why don't, why don't we leave it?
All right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then.
We could argue that all night long.
So moving on to Article Five, right?
Yeah. And this is concerned speaking with government agencies, Vermont government agencies, such as the BLTC or other Vermont government agency. And the reason for this, if you recall, is that if we need a decision, an opinion from a BLTC lawyer on something, as it stands now, I would have to convene either a regular, a special, or an emergency meeting to be able to make that phone call. And I don't think that we should need to do that. And I think as your chair and the vice chair, if I'm not available, should be able to do that.
Okay. So why is government agency capitalized?
You don't, to make a point, like Julie.
And then municipal planning matter, comma.
It's just one of our clerical.
Yeah, no, I know. All right, commission member, comma.
The issue must, okay.
Wants, desires, whatever word you want in there, clarification from the BLTC or other Vermont government agency, on any municipal planning matter.
Comma.
Comma. The issue must first be brought before the planning commission for discussion.
So now here, usually elsewhere, we've capitalized planning commission.
Ah, I'm leaving that up to you.
I don't, I don't think it should be, but you can, if you're consistent.
Yeah.
In general terms, a conflict of interest is an incompatibility between the private and public interests of a public official. It's up to each municipality to specifically articulate the types of conduct that constitute a conflict of interest. A municipality may also set certain behavioral standards for its public officials by broadening a conflict of interest prohibition to address ethical behavior. Twenty-four VSA, twenty-two ninety-one. So I think what we have is fine.
Okay. So, so once again, this is the way I interpret this. If Jim wants to go to the BLTC, we need a meeting.
Oh, I know, I understand.
If Jim calls me up and says, "I think we have a problem with you as the chairperson, go to the BLTC," I go to the BLTC. It gets the members off the hook and puts the, puts the onus on the chair or vice chair to do that. "In the interest of time and efficiency of the chair, acting chair, or secretary."
I think we should change acting chair to vice chair.
Change acting chair, since we have a vice chair.
Where is this, where is?
In the last, very last paragraph.
Oh, wait, but when the commission reaches consensus on the reason for, for, and determines the text of the request, not determine, should have an S on the end.
Okay, determines, yeah, that's, that's fine.
And VT should be Vermont, V E R M O N T, not VT.
Yeah, especially not the capital T.
And government need not be capitalized, and agency need not be capitalized.
I knew Megan was gonna clean all this up anyway.
Okay, so I'll hand it off to Jessica.
Yep.
Said permission will be noted in the minutes. He or she, or the member, he or she shall, the member shall request that the response should be in writing or via email, so they can be shared with the planning commission. Small p, small c.
Oh, so wait a minute.
Can I make a request?
Yeah, please do.
When I talk to Julie about this, 'cause I'm gonna have to fix all this, that when we're typing these up, that we just make things grammatically correct.
You should, yeah.
That, I mean, 'cause I'm sitting here training, and she's making me capitalize things and commas.
That's a great suggestion, absolutely.
It's not grammatically correct, so if it's affecting you guys, I want to make sure that it's right.
So, wait, so throughout this, would you rather not capitalize planning commission? Because in the beginning, you.
I think we shouldn't.
Fine with me, let's go over.
Okay, so to be consistent, then, I'm gonna put this right up in front. I'll give you this.
Okay. I just wanna be, like I said, consistent like you guys, you know.
With the exception of making it grammatically correct, the last paragraph, is everybody okay with that last paragraph?
Wait a minute.
I don't think we have to wordsmith it if Megan does it.
No, I agree.
Thank you.
For example, we should not say, "They will be required to communicate the question."
He or she?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you're not required, is that what you're saying?
No, it's he or she, not they, it's not a whole bunch of people.
All I'm saying is, you're on the board, if a chair is communicating with somebody, is there a record of that?
I have to bring it, I have to bring it back. I have to, we have to put it in the record.
Has to come back to the commission, the next meeting.
Yeah, I have to bring it back.
That's a question I ask.
Yep.
That's good, good question.
Yep. I may forget once in a while, but no.
Oh, no you won't.
I probably don't care most of the time. But I like the whole picture.
No, absolutely.
Okay, who's on, who's on the planning commission now?
We're missing tonight, Michelle, Michelle Peckrow. We're missing Barbara and then us.
And Fred's resigned.
Fred has resigned.
Rosemarie.
Oh, Rosemarie is also absent tonight, too.
And she's gonna be counted as a.
Michelle is an excused absence, and Rosemarie, Barbara, not so much.
They will get their wrists slapped.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, I need little notes.
All right. Go ahead, some more of those.
No, no.
Is it zero to zero?
No, seven to zero.
Oh, okay.
Yankees. I move, we adjourn this meeting.
Wait, 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 I need clearance on something. So you'll bring back the grammatically correct edited version of this with a place for all the commission members' signatures next time, is that all right?
Yeah, maybe I'll have a copy, and I'll have an updated copy.
And at that time, I'll ask for a final vote on that, with the changes we made tonight. I'm almost willing to ask for a vote tonight pending grammatical changes. That's my question.
It's up to your sense of urgency. I don't see it as being that urgent. Let's vote on the finished product.
I don't have any, yeah, I don't have any reason to call the BLTC in the next two weeks.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
So we have a second, any further discussion? I think so, all those in favor?